I think it's just gonna be us. Today, we are recording the meeting today for folks that couldn't be here. And so I just wanted to let you know that the last screen with my name on it is just a test for the PowerPoint. And yeah, so we all know each other. And so I am going to start by sharing the screen for our presentation today. And again, I'm Robin Risky. I'm the Chair of the Board for the Vermont Certified Prevention Specialist. And Tessa, do you wanna? Share who you are?
They already know who I am, but yeah. Everybody afternoon, so excited to have you here.
Great, thank you. And I, Tessa will be providing technical support for me today. So if you have any questions and I don't see your hand raised, just let Tessa know. Alright, so let's dive in. So this is our first CPS study skills that we're offering. And we want to thank you for being here today. And we've all introduced ourselves. So I just wanted to, first of all, thank all of those who have served on our CPS board. So currently that is Tessa Lynch, Dawn Poitras, Michelle Salvador Emdeleini, Jackie Barella, and Victoria Sillsby. So I just want to thank all of them for serving on our current board. And also, I would like to thank those who worked really hard, you know, to make the CPS a reality in Vermont. Tessa, we had folks from out of state, Sandra Del Sesto and Dan Fitzgerald from Rhode Island, and Erin Burnett from the PTTC, who also really worked hard getting this started. And without the dedication of all these folks and the folks at Prevention Works, we would not be here today. So many thanks to you and to the Division of Substance Use for supporting our work as well. So right now, we have nineteen Certified Prevention Specialists, and we are hoping to get more of you onboard. And we are here to support you. We have mentoring and other support. It's all individualized to where you are because, you know, everybody's in a different, a different place, right? So the biggest thing I'd like to tell people is just keep hanging on to your certificates when you go to trainings because that is going to be a requirement, you know, that we can document trainings that you've had. And feel free to jump in at any point. We're a small group. So if you wanna just unmute and ask any questions, please do. So we have had several lunch meetings that went into a little bit of detail about, you know, how to apply for the process requirements and benefits of certification. And we will offer more of these. And today, we are just planning to review the six domains that make up the core competencies. And the reason that we're going over these domains is that this is what the CPS exam is going to be based on. So today, we are going to just do a quick review of what the domains are, play a little Jeopardy game. We are going to start looking at Domain One, which is Planning and Evaluation, and then start looking at some study skills and questions and answers. So every five years, there is a prevention specialist job analysis that's completed that digs really deep into the work that preventionists are doing across the world, like not just in the United States, but it's international. And so these are the six domains that have been identified that all of us should be familiar with and have some direct experience with, right? So it's not just book knowledge, it's also, you know, how we've applied it. So the certification exam, as I mentioned, is developed based on this job analysis. And you can find the outline of this and more detail in the ICNRC Guidance Document as well as the Vermont Guidance Document. So all of that is available, you know, online at our website. So in the exam, there are a total of one hundred and fifty questions, and only a hundred and twenty-five of them are scored. They have some test questions that they put in there. And it takes approximately three hours to complete, but you know, you have three hours to complete it. And in that exam, the Planning and Evaluation, which is Domain One, thirty percent of the test is based on that domain that we're gonna cover today. Fifteen percent is on Prevention Education, thirteen percent on Community Organization, fifteen percent on Professional Growth and Responsibility, twelve on the Communication, and fifteen on Public Policy. So today, we're gonna start with looking at Domain One, which is the Planning and Evaluation. And this, this is the domain that really starts looking at different prevention planning models, logic models, evaluation techniques, you know, action, action planning. So when you think of your experience with Planning and Evaluation, what are, what are some of the words or tasks that you think might be associated with, with this domain? And you can just unmute, just like when you think about, if someone says, oh, we're doing Planning and Evaluation, what are some of the things that you can relate to with that?
Would that be like a capacity review or a readiness assessment in a community?
Yep, that, yep, it definitely could be part of, that could be part of Planning and Evaluation is, is looking at your capacity and doing some of that initial assessment, definitely.
Strategic planning.
Yep, yep, strategic, yeah, definitely. Like, as you start pulling together, you know, a community or a team, and you're doing these different, thinking about what are, what is the data? What is the data telling you? What is your story and your community? What is your readiness and your capacity? And then you can start thinking about what is that strategic planning, which can include all of the elements of planning with logic models, but you know, how you're going to fund your programming and sustaining your program, you know, pretty much encompasses different elements of the SPIF. Great, so this is, I'm gonna share this Jeopardy game with you. I hope it works. I created this, I don't know, maybe four years ago, and I really haven't had a chance to, to share it with a, a live and have it work. So we'll see if it works. So we are gonna, again, focus on the Domain One. And this is just to get your mind thinking a little bit about the content of Domain One. Alright, so this is our, our Jeopardy Board. And today, we are going to focus on Planning and Evaluation. And this is something that you, it's, it's challenge of choice. So you can choose to play along with the game and on your own piece of paper, score how much money you make if you get your answers right. So the first question we have, or the first, you know, and the way that Jeopardy works is it gives you information and then you, you ask, what is the question? And one of the reasons I'm doing this is to get you to start thinking about test-taking. So in data collection, information that is typically gathered and reported in numerical terms such as substance use rates or numbers of drug-related crime. So the key words, like what are some of the key words you see in this statement? If you were taking a test?
Data collection?
Yep, so we're talking about data collection. So that should start getting your mind thinking about that part of Domain One.
Numerical terms.
Yes, numerical terms. So numerical terms tells you a lot about what they're asking. So does anybody wanna take a guess at what this question is? What is? What is quantitative data? So, so again, that quantity piece, so that numerical data, that numerical piece gets you thinking about quantity. So that's just some of the stuff that you wanna start thinking when you see these questions. Alright, so a method of collecting data that involves a facilitated discussion of five to ten individuals with similar backgrounds.
Can I guess? What focus group? Ding 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 ding. I don't play Jeopardy, so that was exciting.
Good job. We need to have it in a question form, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
They also had it correct in the chat.
Yeah, excellent. Alright, so for six hundred dollars, "A type of evaluation implemented with the use of such tools as external reviews or member satisfaction surveys in order to identify and improve the coalition structure." So external reviews, member satisfaction. And so this is what is process evaluation. So again, you'll see different clues in, in the questions. And it's not gonna be presented this way, just so you know, this is just to get your juices flowing. You will be given a question with four answers. So, yes, so process evaluation. "A roadmap that includes the problem and ends with long-term outcomes." Any thoughts on a roadmap?
Shane wrote logic model in the chat.
Excellent. What is a logic model? Thank you. I, I can't actually see the chat, so thank you. Yes, so what is a logic model? Eight hundred dollars. Excellent. And our last one is, "How much and in what ways a program, policy, or practice is changed to meet local needs and circumstances?" And this is something that all of this, a lot of this is covered in the SAPs. So you bring a program into your community, and you need to make some changes. So what is adaptation? Alright, so again, you're going to see these words. So this is just getting you thinking about what is involved in the, this domain. And so as I mentioned today, you know, the focus is on Domain One, which is, you know, again, thirty percent of the exam content. And we do have a resource guide that we'll share with you and has information about how to access the ICNRC Candidate Guide and our Vermont Guidance Manual. So when we think about Planning and Evaluation, so this is just gonna be a brief overview of what Planning and Evaluation is. So this is where we are going to be conducting that community level needs assessment. This is where we're going to really dig into what are the community characteristics? What are, what is the actual problem? We're going to do that community readiness assessment that, that Sunny mentioned. You know, really look at what are the gaps? You know, we've all been in that situation where we've tried to apply an intervention in a community and it didn't fit because we really hadn't looked at what the problem was. We're gonna look at who is the focus population, you know, and are the, the, are they involved with, you know, understanding what is going on in their community? So we want to really be looking at, you know, shared risk and protective factors among these groups. And anyone that's, you know, really dug into this work in the community knows that it's really important that we listen to that community that even in Vermont, you know, our small communities all have different cultures within them. So what works in one area may not work, you know, in another. This is also about conducting information gathering and looking at the data that we're collecting. We're also utilizing prevention theory. So, you know, more of that's focused now on health disparities, social determinants of health. And again, you know, the theories of change, risk and protective factors. And, you know, really doing that assessment to understand that, you know, what is happening in one community might look different again in another community. So have any of you been, or can you tell me about a time when you did any of these things? Like when you actually applied, you know, doing any of this assessment work and needs assessment?
I would say I'm doing one right now for Mental Health First Aid around the state and, and then trying to support the build-out of regions. And I also learned it and, and did it when I started the work on the RPP grant in 2016. And what's really nice to see is that coalition is still, has continued on and has adjusted as they've continued to, to determine what the community needs.
That's awesome. That's great. And it sometimes feels like, oh my gosh, here we are doing, like we just held an event in Brattleboro where we did another sort of focused listening session about services for adolescents. And it's, it's like, wow, we just did this like five years ago. But sometimes you have to, I mean, often you have to repeat your assessment because the landscape can change so much in a community, you know? And we see that with drugs, you know, changing. You know, although we, as we know and have seen in our recent data that, you know, alcohol continues to be a really big issue in Vermont, right? So sometimes you have to redo these assessments so you can share with people like, hey, this is what's going on. This new data, you know, can really inform your work. Other things that we do in Planning and Evaluation are to develop that comprehensive prevention plan, that logic model that we talked about earlier. And we know that as we're developing that logic model and we're identifying the problems and we are working for long-term solutions that we're thinking about, you know, how we're evaluating it and also how we're sustaining it. We also want to identify how we're evaluating it. Like what are the tools that we're going to use to know that we've made a difference? And that can be, you know, those process evaluation, outcome evaluation. It can be RBA, you know, there's lots of ways that we can do data collection. And then also, you know, how you interpret the data that you're getting and share it with other people. You know, because we wanna show people that we're being effective. We also wanna conduct evaluation activities because we may want to change what we're doing. You know, has, has anyone ever had an experience where you started a program and realized halfway through that it wasn't working? And you had to reset your course? We, we, we had taken a campaign from one rural community in Vermont and did it in another community. And there was such a different response by the community that they actually went out and tore the signs down. It was the social hosting campaign. And it was just so amazing how it really matters, you know, that you really have to know your community. So sometimes you have to change midway. And so we changed the whole campaign to, instead of, you know, host, don't host, because you could lose, I think it was, those who host lose the most. We changed it to be a friend, not a bartender, or be a parent, not a bartender. And it had a totally different feel to it with input from the community. And then the last part of Planning and Evaluation is to, you know, look at strategies to, to sustain your work. And that's where, as mentioned, the community capacity building, doing your grant research and writing, you know, getting that data out there and community ownership. And so it's just really important that, you know, to understand this is a, this is all something that happens. It can take years to do this in some communities. But, you know, so when you think about developing that comprehensive plan and evaluating, is there a time that you, can you tell me about a time that you were involved in Planning and Evaluation activities that are here on the screen?
I was actually gonna reference somewhere Kimberly and I did together. Up in the Northeast Kingdom, we were looking to bring in a mentorship program. And the options through the funding were not really landing for people. So we were able to identify the work of Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And that brand name was really something that people were interested in. And so we were able to course correct and then get approval from our funders to add an option that we didn't have before. And so that definitely took creativity, but we had to have the data to back up why that was the program to go. So it was, it was, you know, probably considered a heavy lift, but it lives on now so many years later, so it was worth it.
Awesome, great, great example. That's a great example. Anyone else?
Yeah, well, I'll just piggyback on that in terms of, there was a lot of community involvement in that process once it did get like the approval from funders because we had to make sure that the community was going to support the program. And so, and Sunny was one of those folks who sort of coordinated that. And we had a lot of people at some original meetings to just really talk through. They had a lot of questions about our program and whether or not it was lo- local and how we're funded and how it's paid for. And, you know, how do you keep the kids safe? Like there were all of these wonderful questions generated. And we went through a whole process before we decided really that we, that this could be a viable option for the community and we were able to move forward with it. So I guess I hadn't even been thinking about that. So thanks for sparing my memory, Sunny, about kind of evaluated assessment type of process that we went through in a community.
Awesome, that's great. So again, that was just a quick review of what that first domain is about. And so what we're gonna do now is talk a little, a little bit more about the exam, what it looks like, and just go through some examples of what you might find on the exam as it relates to Domain One. So again, I mentioned there's a hundred and fifty questions that come with a four-option format. And it's really about picking the best answer. So it's one of those exams that might have two answers, could be kind of right, but there's one that's the best. So it's really taking your time as you go through the exam. Again, you have three hours to complete it. And you'll either have, I think it's three or four answer choices. So it's just really important that you read the question, take your time, review the words and the phrases presented. And it's really recommended that you not skip a question because if you don't answer it, it will count as wrong. So if you can try to answer the questions as you go along, that, you know, and also, you probably have some of your own ways that you, you know, study and take tests. So we're just gonna do, so this is an example. So as you look at this question, again, in data collection, "Information that is typically gathered and reported in numerical terms such as," oh, this is the same question we had earlier. Great, so you all would know this. So again, we showed this earlier. So we saw that that word numerical you mentioned came up and data collection. So when you look at the answers below, one suggestion is to start thinking about what is not correct here, right? And in your mind, crossing out, you know, what is not correct. So we know that this is not firsthand knowledge because we're talking about numerical terms. It's not a, a focus group either. Focus group actually collects qualitative data. It's more about quality and statement. But it's that quantity piece that we know is the, is the right answer that we did earlier. So we're gonna do a poll. This is gonna be anonymous. And all of the questions that we have come from either the Rhode Island Sample Exam, the Tennessee Study Guide, there's also Quizlet, or other questions that I've developed. So if you could just take a moment to, we're gonna just start with question one. So the first step in developing a comprehensive community prevention plan is what? First step. It's either assessment of readiness, capacity building, planning, or implementation. And just when you're done, oh, I guess all the questions are on the, okay. Alright, let's just, I guess we're gonna have to do each one to finish the poll, right?
Is there a way for me to put it in the chat, Robin?
Um, let's see. Are you, are folks able to answer the poll? What are folks seeing on their screen?
I, I do think we have to answer all five questions.
Okay, so go ahead and answer all five.
But you have the option too? That's good, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yep. Great, yeah, so if you just take a moment and then we'll go back and go through them. And just let us know when you're done. Thank you. And take your time, it's, we're not, we're not in a rush.
Let me know when you're ready so I can end it.
I'm ready.
Ooh, we got some splits. I like it, I like it. Hey, we got it, ready?
Okay, alright, so we will start with the first question. So the first step in developing a comprehensive community prevention plan is assessment of readiness, which is correct. That is the first step that we know from the SPIF. And it allows us to tailor the programs as needed because we know what the community is telling us. The, one of the keys on this is it says, you know, that first step, right? So that, that is, was your key. Number two, the closest description of the asset development model is, and we have a split on, was developed by the Search Institute or focuses only on resiliency factors. And so the correct answer is, the, was developed by the Search Institute. And I think, you know, again, this is an example of where it might be, it's like the language that's being used. So what is the closest description? And that it doesn't, and sometimes when you see only, never, that those answers are often not correct. uh, that those answers are often not correct, if it's really definitive. Because they do focus on resiliency factors, but they also um consider other things in their, in their research. So again, it's a little tricky in a way, but um it really is about what is the closest one. Uh, number three, prevention professionals must determine what factors helped explain why the most, why people begin to engage in problem behaviors at the most basic level these factors are. And you all chose the correct one, risk and protective factors. So again, they're using that word factors. These other things do have influence on on the the decisions that people make. Um, schools and community, family and peers, individual and families, but it was that key word um factors. So that was really good that you picked that up. Qualitative data is often collected through uh, and we have the community meetings, newspaper articles, arrest reports, hospital records. And again, you chose the right one with um community meetings. So talking about that focus group and its qualitative, right? So if it said quantitative, that's when the data, that harder data would come into play. Qualitative is more subjective and um, you know, it's usually reported in in words, right? And not and not numbers. Um, and then the last one is um, an objective statement is A, time-specific and measurable. B identifies specific uh individuals and responsibilities. Or uh C is general and inclusive. And um, the word, the correct answer is, um, when you think about objectives, is do you all remember the SMART, SMART objectives? So SMART objectives are um specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-bound. So um, what, the correct answer is is time-specific and measurable. So an objective, um, so again, it just gets you thinking a little bit more about those keywords, um, you know, and um, you know, that that, you know, it's measurable. Um, so, yeah, so that is the type of question that you are uh going to see on the exam. Um, what questions do you have so far about about this and um? Is there anything that surprises you about these questions or any comments that you have about what we're doing here?
I just find it helpful, you know, to go through them and think about it. So this is helpful for me for sure.
Great. So this uh, this page here has a lot of words on it. I saw, I saw a comedian and he was like, I don't know, what is it with books? There's just so many words in it. Like, can't they ever just take, have a blank page and give you a break, you know? But uh, so again, this is just a summary for domain one of the types of things um that you would wanna be studying. So it's, it's not meant to overwhelm you. Um, this summary comes from the Florida CPS manual. All right. So now we're gonna talk just briefly about study strategy. So we talked a little bit about the types of um content that you're gonna be doing with the um domain one. Um, and there are several suggestions. Um, the Rhode Island Study Guide is one of the tools that we've mentioned several times, and this is some of what the, of what they have recommended. Um, and we also are going to probably review this every session, even if it feels repetitive, because everything on here is really critical. So one is to know, is to mark your cal- calendar um for when you want to do the exam. When you become a CPS in Vermont, you have six months to study, which is really cool. So you have time. You can actually take one of the domains each month up until the time of your exam. Um, so you have time to study. I really encourage people that are applying for their CPS to kind of separate out like your application process, focus on just that. Don't think about studying until you get your application in, and then you have that six months to study. But that's just a suggestion. Everybody, you know, has to do things um in their own way. Uh, also testing yourself. There are practice tests and exams that can um help you get a sense of what you know, what you need to study. Um, again, the resource list that you have or will send you has lots of free um places you can go for exams. Some cost money, but most of them are free. Um, the Rhode Island Guide also has practice activities that are similar to those in the SAPS course. Um, so you know, it's, it's um, there's just a lot of different ways to do it. And if you haven't taken the SAPS, there is talk of one being offered this summer. Um, we're thinking of hosting one in Southern Vermont that, you know, we're, we're figuring out. Um, and right now, we do not require the SAPS to get your CPS in Vermont, but it is such essential information that, you know, I highly, highly, highly recommend it. Um, third is just, you know, to work on your weak areas. So as you go through your domains, there might be a particular domain that um is challenging. And again, you know, maybe go back and see what percentage on the exam each domain has, so you can get a sense of where you wanna study. Um, you know, making that time, you know, whether it's daily or on your weekends or you you block off half an hour every Wednesday, uh, whatever you need, you know, you know, take breaks. You know, don't try, try to, you know, cram study prevention. Um, you know, and create something that is manageable. I often will set my alarm when there's something I really need to focus on and I just focus on that. And if other thoughts come into my head, I write it down and stay focused on what I'm doing. Um, like grant reports, things like that. Hmm. And then, you know, start gathering your materials, like all these study guides that that are on our resource list. Um, the CADCA primers um are really good to to review. Um, the next suggestion is to um create a study checklist. So again, looking at each of the study guides, particularly from Rhode Island, Ohio and Tennessee, uh, because they do a really good job of outlining key points for each of the domain areas. Um, and then, you know, focusing on key terms. So on the resource guide, we also have like flashcards that you can go into, um, which are kind of cool. Um, and you can even get together and study with each other, which we highly recommend that you have a study team, because sometimes that can help motivate you. Um, you know, studying with others can be, you know, really helpful. Um, and also understanding your own learning style, because everybody has their own style. Some learn best by reading, some need to hear podcast or webinar. Um, you know, you may have to, if you're a kinesthetic learner, you have to like do it in short bursts and move around. Um, and you know, so do you find something that works for you, you know? And you, and you don't have to do all of these to pass the exam, right? So you're all adults, you know what works, you know how you study. Um, and you know, are there any other, do any of you have any other wait, uh, tips on how you study that might not be mentioned that might help you in the future?
I um always did, I gave myself one piece of paper. So instead of flashcards, and I mean, sometimes I, it would be really, really small. But I was like, I can know one piece of paper, but it was real more the process of of writing it out. So my version of flashcards.
Yeah. I know in college I would read, uh, we had textbooks, right? I had only had textbooks. We didn't have computers. And I would get a highlighter and I would highlight all the key things and then I would write that all down on a piece of paper. And basically then I would just study the notes. So I basically would dissect their information. So, yeah, so there's lots of ways that we can uh, you know, learn, learn to study and to get that brain uh motivated. Um, and and in the future, um, when we get to the end of the domains, we'll talk a little bit about the day of of the exam and some additional uh study skills. Um, so, yeah, so again, um, test-taking skills are, you know, really to listen carefully to the directions when you get there, you know, and this is true, you know, with any exam. I can remember in high school being given an exam and there were really long directions and the very last sentence said, you don't have to take this test, just turn the page over and let it and put your pen on it. And most of the group took the test, because they didn't read all the way through. So just really, again, taking a deep breath, really listening, how is it, you know? How much time do you have? They may even give you some advice. Um, you know, the test administrator will have, you know, specific things and so good to just listen. Um, some recommend that you just sort of scan the test uh just to get an idea of how long it is, you know, just so you can set your brain up for it. Again, it's multiple choice questions. Um, they do recommend again that you work on them in order. And that, you know, you can skip a question if you really are getting stuck, but you just wanna write down the number or something, if they give you a little piece of paper, so you remember to go back. Um, understanding the question, understand the question before answering it. So again, really reading that question carefully. Um, you know, and when in doubt, you know, eliminate some of the choices that you know were wrong so that you can get it down to the one or two uh answers that you really wanna be looking at. Uh, review the choices, read the question, try to think of the answer and then look for it. So see if you can answer the question before you see the answers. And sometimes, you know, it just helps to validate that you're on the right track. Um, if that doesn't work, you know, don't overanalyze it. If you think a a question is a trick, you might overthink it, right? So they're not trick questions. They just are getting you to pick the best answer. And uh, yeah, and review your work. So after you're done, go, you know, the test isn't over until your time's up. So take that time, you know, to go back, make sure all the questions are answered. And uh, you know, that that, um, you also keep calm, stay calm, keep breathing. Um, and you know, the, it it's, it's not, um, you're not uh going to, yeah, just do the best that you can and um, yeah, um, it'll just make you, you know, more efficient. So, um, so those are just some suggestions that, again, we'll review. And again, next month, we'll go over domain two and add a couple more study skills and um, yeah, we'll keep um asking you to uh, you know, come back and and we'll also be recording the, all of these in case you miss one. Um, we do have an evaluation for today. So I am going to um stop the share. It's just a brief evaluation so we can get a sense. What questions uh do you have uh for today?
What, where is the test taken and who administers it?
Great question. So uh, the test is uh administered by an outside company. And we have several options in our region uh of where you can take it. And I can um put that in the, uh, I will send that information to you and make that part of the next PowerPoint. Um, so you do have to take it in person, um, unless you have an accommodation. So they will, you know, consider accommodations um if needed. So, yeah, I will get you more information on the test. Thanks for asking that. I know that Burlington has some, I think, um, just over the border in Keene and Albany. Um, the last time I checked, everything would have been within an hour drive of where people live and work. So anyway, so if you could take a moment, I put the um evaluation in the chat.